Good evening. This meeting is called to order at 5:01. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions on how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, NVUSD.org/Board. Before going into closed session, excuse me, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on closed session items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there are none, we will adjourn to closed session. We will see everyone at 7:00 PM. We are reconvening to open session at 7:01. Good evening. My name is Robin Jankowicz, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Welcome. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Esidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions?
Absolutely. Buenas tardes. La interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva de esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación desde un computador, haga clic en el icono de interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla desde la aplicación Zoom. En un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en el botón que dice "more" o más en la pantalla, en la parte inferior de la pantalla, y ahí elija la interpretación en el idioma dentro de la aplicación Zoom. Este es un canal de separado que le permitirá escuchar la traducción del inglés al español simultáneamente. Por favor, tenga en cuenta que los servicios de la interpretación no están disponibles cuando se une a nuestra reunión por teléfono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant.
Yes. Student Board Member Gomez?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marius?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Public participation and moving forward will be both virtual online and in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. Trustee Water, do you have a report on closed session items?
Nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you very much. Student Board Rep Gomez, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. There is an amendment to the agenda. So first, we will approve pulling F2 due to a scheduling conflict. So may I get first?
Move to approve the pulling of F2.
Thank you. First by Trustee Gracia?
Second.
Second by Trustee Riser, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I'd like to get approval of the amended minutes, I mean the amended agenda.
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Gracia?
Second.
Second by Trustee Riser, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, August 25th. May I get a first?
Move to approve.
First by Trustee Gracia?
Second.
Second by Trustee Riser, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the minutes are now approved. Dr. Masetti, recognition of visitors and employee organizations?
Yeah, thank you, President Jankowicz. We do have some representatives from our employee organizations tonight. Can you please promote President Leslie Walter, who's here representing NAPS this evening? Ms. Walter, would you like to address the board?
Yes, Dr. Masetti, I would. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Are you, Ms. Walter?
Okay. Good evening, President Jankowicz, trustees of the Board of Education, student representative Gomez, Dr. Masetti, and members of the Napa Valley Unified School District community. I am pleased to be here and grateful that I have the option of Zoom this evening. I want to acknowledge particularly district management and maintenance and operations for this week ensuring that HVAC systems were working as needed and that we all who had to be at school sites were able to be present in environmentally controlled classrooms, offices, and other workspaces. Truly grateful. This has been quite the week. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walter.
No one else is in attendance this evening. Thank you for being here, Ms. Walter.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, one of our favorite parts of the evening, recognition of students of the month, which I will remind everybody is generously sponsored by the Napa Valley Education Foundation. And we are going to start with Napa High School. Dr. Ainsworth, are you here to introduce Juan and Bailey?
I am. Thank you. So I believe our first recognition this month is for Angel Diaz, Juan Angel Diaz, who unfortunately had to work tonight and is unable to be here. But I'd like to just say a few words about Juan. Those of you that have met Juan understand how special of a human being he is. Over the course of the last year, he's become a really critical part of our student leadership team. He's one of our student forum leaders. He, I know some of you participated in the Helping Heroes, or Honoring Helping Heroes project with our Leila program. And then he was one of our key leaders for the Napa High Mental Health Fair that took place last spring. Beyond that, with Juan, my first introduction to Juan was we were putting together our student forum, and I needed someone that could be honest and be able to talk and lead other students. And Juan's name popped up, and I didn't really know Juan at this point, but very quickly came to define him as just courageously and fearlessly honest. He is able to say the things that need to be said in a way that transforms the room that he's in and to make a positive impact. So he's loved by his teachers, loved by his peers for that reason. So I'm bummed that you don't get to hear him tonight, but our first student is Angel Diaz, and we are super proud of him.
Our congratulations.
Our second one, who I see here, is Bailey O'Callahan. Bailey is our Napa High ASB president. She currently takes several AP and honors courses. She's a member of our volleyball team in Napa High. She's in our chorus class and was a key contributor with our musical. Who, in talking with Mr. Cooper, I just asked, hey, give me some words and talk about her role in the musical. And he described her as the ultimate five-tool prospect. There wasn't anything she couldn't do or take charge of, whether it be props or sound or whatever was needed, including changing microphones in the middle of a performance without anybody noticing. So she's amazingly talented. And again, it speaks incredibly well. And I'm going to let her just speak to you because it's going to be far more impressive than anything I could ever say or attempt to say. So Bailey O'Callahan.
Hi. Should I turn on my camera?
We'd love to see you.
Okay, awesome. Initially, I thought I was going to be zooming in from American Canyon High School after a volleyball game. But due to the heat, I'm now in a quieter environment. So hopefully be better. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board and my parents. Without a strong educational and support system, I wouldn't be where I am today. When Dr. Ainsworth walked into my second period of class and gave me this award, he told one of the stories of when he first met me. And that was during the depths of COVID when I was one of two people in person, and he needed someone who could talk. And my leadership teacher knew that it was me. So now my friends are joking about how I won this award for being able to talk a lot. I know that's funny, but I'm really thankful. I know it's more than just talking. Dr. Ainsworth told a couple of the stories, some of my proudest moments. I'll get into kind of a little bit of choir. I joined the NVUSD district in third grade when I moved from Washington State. I attended Alta Heights Elementary with Angel and then River and now Napa. I was immediately thrown into a choir class when I got to Napa High. And it's one of those things where once you get in, you don't really leave. It's a big family and they're really inclusive, and I'm really happy to be in it. After this year, I'll take in five choir classes. And two of those were the musical class. And one of my favorite stories to tell is when I had to learn a whole new sound system last year and be able to change a mic in 15 seconds. And I never thought that choir would teach me how to problem solve so quickly, especially with masks and things. But I'm really proud of learning and using choir, I guess, in my everyday life. This year, I am the vice president of trouble voices. So I will take everyone's needs into account and make sure they're heard. I am also a part of leadership. I'm ASB president this year. And ASB and leadership is also a family. It's more than just poster making. It's about inclusivity and making sure everyone's heard. Another one of my favorite stories from leadership is winning the homecoming float every year. Minus my sophomore year when it was during COVID, I'm hoping to win for a third year. It was a lot of collaboration, and it wasn't just about winning. It was about working with my peers, and I'm also proud of that. So hopefully, we win by spirit this year as well. I'm also a multi-sport athlete at Napa High. This will be my fourth year in volleyball, second year as a captain, and my second year in lacrosse. With volleyball, I've played for a while now, I think six years. I assisted coach Redwood Middle School last year through the ACE program, and I assisted their sixth graders. And we actually won their big game against Silverado. And so I was super proud of that. I love working with like younger kids. That's also why when I got the opportunity to work with Napa Parks and Rec for beach and indoor volleyball with Kelly Van Wynden, I was super stoked. I really like sharing my passion with students and younger kids. That's another reason why I'm involved in clubs as well. This year, I'm hoping to restart the Lunch Buddies program in Napa High. That's where we integrate students in different like levels of class with our special ed program and our ELD kids so they can meet everybody. And it's a lot about being able to meet different people and become a family because I think that's important in Napa High. As for college next year, I'm going to be graduating. I'm hoping to go to UC San Diego and major in biology. Hopefully going into the medical industry to become a dermatologist because I really can empathize with people. And my goal in life is to help others. Thank you so much for this award.
Bailey, thank you. Much congratulations to Juan and Bailey. Public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda in as much... Oh, that's what I pulled. No worries. No worries. In as much as board action is limited to posted agenda items, speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Trustee Water, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items received via email at publiccomment@NVUSD.org?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email for 8:00 AM this morning.
Thank you. And before we go to virtual, we have two cards for, I'm here in the boardroom. Crystal, would you like to approach the podium? Welcome.
Three minutes for elementary school children, and this is simply insufficient. Further, Northwood has broken this time into 15 minutes to play, 15 minutes to obtain lunch in line, eat your lunch, and throw away. My understanding is that it was actually 12 minutes to stand in line and eat. And at that time, at the end of 12 minutes, a symbol has changed. And now the food is thrown out, and you have to clean up and go on your way. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention recommends at least 20 minutes once children are seated to eat their lunch, to enjoy their meal and socialize. The American Academy of Pediatrics states that recess is a necessary break in the day. The cognitive processing and academic performance depend on regular breaks from concentrated classroom work. And that peer interactions during recess are a unique complement to the classroom. The lifelong skills acquired for communication, negotiation, cooperation, sharing, problem-solving, and coping are not only foundations for healthy development, but also fundamental measures of the school experience. The California Labor Code provides 30 minutes for most hourly employees who work more than six hours a day, a 30-minute lunch period, which is not broken down into when you can eat and when you may not eat. Employees that are subject to that have a full 30 minutes to do whatever they want, whenever they want. Napa Valley Unified School District is asking children ages five through 10 to use about half of that time to eat their lunch, and that is simply unacceptable. We have children that have been standing in line for 10 minutes of the 12 minutes that they are given to eat. That's not okay. I've been sending home lunch with my child to make sure that she doesn't have to stand in line, but not every family can afford to do that. And I feel for the children that come to school every day where this might be their biggest meal of the day. They may go home and not even have snack or dinner. And they have to finish their food in that short amount of time where it gets thrown out. That is not okay. Today, there was a slight change thanks to the hard work of parents at Northwood. And my understanding is that the lunchtime was increased by a little bit, but that at the cost of recess time. It was still a 30-minute period. And perhaps someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is my understanding. It was still a 30-minute period, and there was extra time given to lunch, but time was taken away from the play part of lunch. That's not okay either. We need to go back to the 45 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather.
Hi, my name is Heather Fisk. I am a parent at Northwood, also I have a fifth grader, and my first grader is here also with me. I am also wanted to talk about the elementary school schedule for this year. Decreasing the amount of time for lunch period, and then also fourth and fifth graders only get 10 minutes for their morning recess, is not acceptable. I understand that you switched the teacher prep period from the lunch period to the end of the day. But honestly, the teacher prep period should not affect our students. Our students are the ones at the end of the day that are being harmed by this. My son gets less than five minutes to eat his lunch. He says, I had a bite of a pear, and that's all I had. And he was told he needs to throw his food away. The amount of waste happening is unacceptable. Every child should be able to have an adequate amount of time to get their food, sit down, and eat. As Crystal mentioned, the CDC recommends 20 minutes seated eating. That's after they get their food. The American Pediatrics Association recommends 20, but they really want 25 minutes of seated activity, if seated eating. This is not to take away from the time that these students need in order to have play on the playground. That my child problem solves on the playground. He's playing basketball with his friends. There is an argument, something happens, they problem solve. They learn how to do these things on the playground. And this is what we need to teach our children, that they need to be able to go, be able to talk to their peers on the playground. And they still need to be able to have time to play and eat. The American, the, excuse me, the California Department of Education, it says that lengthening the lunch period by adding at the, lunch period should be lengthened by adding the time at the end of the school day. There's also additional solutions, which they say promoting collaboration at the school and district level. School administration and nutrition staff can work together and to ensure all students have enough time to eat. This is the California Department of Education saying this. I really believe that we need to follow this, and we need to have at least 20 minutes of seated time for these children so they can properly eat and properly socialize with their peers during recess also. Yes, students will talk during lunchtime when they're eating. But if given adequate time, they will be able to have five bites of a pear instead of just one or half a bite. And that's what I really would like recommend for you guys to look at the schedule this year and see how it can be adjusted, how we can move that teacher prep time so that everybody wins. Because there is a solution for this, we just need to band together and find it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charlene?
Hello. My name is Charlene Sais. I have children at Northwood as well. I'm here to advocate for the children who cannot speak for themselves. I'm also here to advocate for the parents who do not have time to volunteer, which I do. I have firsthand witnessed children hiding food in their pockets, stuffing food in their mouths, and just basically not having enough time to eat their lunches. I need you all, each one of you, to realize you are responsible and reliable for our children, and they are under your care when they are at school, and you need to do better. You need to do better. That is not adequate enough time for our children to nourish their bodies and to rest. I'm sure that each one of you have adequate time to do that. Are we only allowing our children the bare minimum? You are allowing our children the bare minimum? This is unacceptable. And I think you know in your heart of hearts that that is correct. You need to do better. This is not acceptable. I firsthand have been volunteering at lunch. Like I said, I've seen children stuff food in their mouths. I've seen children try to hide food in their pockets because they're afraid or unable to finish their food. How does this contradict, no child should be hungry? My children are coming home hungry every day and starving. They're having headaches. They're keeping their lunches outside in the heat? What if I could make tuna fish? The lunch, in the lunches, the quality of lunches are a different thing. But right now, my most concern is advocating for the children that cannot speak for themselves. Do better. 30 minutes is not enough time. I understand that they broke the times up today between 20 minutes and only 10 minutes of play? I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of you guys. This is Napa Valley. We should be leading. We should be setting example, not just giving the bare minimum. You are all responsible for our children when they're in school, and you are all reliable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have any virtual public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, please.
Good, Emmy. I've been this whole very long time. I'm trying to see if there are way. I'm not in the school anymore, but there are way I can get a new newsletter to my email. I tried to do it, and that made me lock me in. I think that there are way I can get that because I love that, I love that. So I can see what going on all school. So that's my question.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will follow up. Mr. Michaels, is there an additional public speaker?
Yes. Next speaker is Kaia Prosser. Go ahead, please.
Kaia, you might be on mute.
Ms. Prosser, are you there? All right, we will move on. Next.
Back in case she can access. Do we have another public speaker in the meantime?
Yes, we do. The speaker is S. Sommer. Please state your full name and go ahead.
Are you on mute possibly?
Suzanne Sommer. I would like to ask each of you to make a point of going to a school or more than one school and having lunch and observing the amount of garbage at the end of the day. Mealtime should be a fun and social time of the day. The Napa Unified School District is failing to meet the physical, emotional, and social needs of the students because of the inadequate time to eat lunch and engage each other in conversation. Mealtime should be a social time. I request that you allow 30 minutes from classroom to the end of lunch. I had lunch at Quavo Vista with my first, my first great-grandson because he refuses to eat the school lunch, saying he does not have time to eat it. He'd also brings, when I give him a lunch, he brings home at least a third of his lunch uneaten, again saying he does not have time. He also is very upset at the beginning of the year because he was told to throw away food. He wanted a salad bar, and it was told that he had to take everything else and to just throw it away. And he said, Nana, this is wrong. I don't want to do it. So before lunch, the principal told me not to talk to him because if conversation occurred, he would not have time to eat. So I sat there and did not talk to him. He ate less than half of that school lunch before the attendant announced to the group that they had either two or three minutes, I don't remember, to eat. So they had to remain silent, silent during mealtime. Then I went and stood by the garbage cans and watched as about 85% of those children discarded a half to two-thirds of their lunches, full cartons of milk, apples with a bite out of them, half-eaten hamburgers. It was really a very disturbing lesson. So again, I would ask that you change the school lunchtime so that they have 30 minutes to eat. And most importantly, go and see for yourselves what this is like. Thank you very much for the time.
Michaels, do we have additional speakers?
Yes, we do. Next speaker is Tracy Moskowitz. Go ahead, please.
All right. So my name is Tracy Moskowitz. I'm a parent of students at Pubo or a student at Pubo Vista and an aunt to some students at West Park. And I wanted to bring up, I'm also a math teacher at Unidos Middle School, and we have this program, Dream Box, that we're all being asked to use. In elementary schools, they're using it during the day. And in middle schools, it's if we can get it for homework. We're spending a lot of money on this, and I know that our three years are coming up. But we're also sending parent squares constantly to families about you need to do Dream Box, and we're not giving them devices. So my daughter in first grade does not have a device that comes home. My four nieces don't have devices, and their parents, my sister can't get a device. And we're asking them to do this at home. So I want us to just think about our messaging. If we're going to keep asking them to do this at home, I do think that the school needs to provide home devices and not just school devices. Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Michaels?
Yes. Next speaker is Kaia Prosser. Are you, please, go ahead?
Um, hello. Hello, board members. I am Kaia Prosser, eighth grader at Unidos Middle School. Tonight, I will be addressing the dress code. Tonight, I will be addressing the dress code that has been implemented throughout the Napa Valley School District. On the first day of school, we are told there would be a dress code, but that didn't bother me in the slightest. Every school has a dress code and it would be odd if we didn't have one. But when further learning how the dress code would be, it was a tough pill to swallow. I understand the reasoning behind a dress code, but I do feel that as a district, we need to do a better job of understanding what is right for our students. Well, I do understand it is our job to come to school. I don't enjoy being told that I shouldn't bend down for the fear my shorts are too short, as I was told Tuesday morning, the 31st of August. In no way am I suggesting that we get rid of the dress code. It is of course needed, but I think that we need to do a better job of understanding the current times. While maybe a few years back, the style wasn't crop tops and ripped jeans, it is now. May I also bring up that nowadays you can't even find shorts that are mid thigh. And if you do, you have to size up so they hit your mid thigh. And then there are also a dress code for they are baggy. Another incident similar to the situation I faced with happened on September 6th. I saw a girl wearing a tank top, but when she removed her backpack, it shifted her bra strap, making it visible. At the side of a bra strap, she was immediately told to fill out a blue slip, which is our system of discipline. At this age, we are teaching young girls that the side of a bra strap is a disgrace. By punishing her for something so little at such a young age, it is implying that a bra strap is vulgar and disgusting to look at. Mind you, the day she was dress coded, it was 115 degrees. Quite acceptable weather to wear a tank top. When young people are told to follow rules on how to dress, it is an interesting matter. While some will choose to follow it as religion, others will purposely go around it and try to find shortcuts. At this point in life, everyone is trying to find out who they are. This may mean some days wearing a crop top or other days wearing jeans with rips. We're all just trying to find our true selves and this is in a way preventing us from finding ourselves. Some people may abuse the dress code if it's not as strict, but you should allow us to do the right thing. And have a chance at showing you we can dress ourselves appropriately. If you further investigate the dress code, you can clearly see it's targeted at a certain gender. While the side of a bare midriff on a girl is an extreme violation of dress code, shorts that are in fact nowhere near mid thigh on a boy won't even turn ahead. If we are implicating a dress code, we need to make it clear that is in no way targeting a specific gender, age, or race. When asking the question, why is the dress code so strict to a teacher? I was answered with, we are teaching you to dress professionally. While I understand that is our responsibility to come to school, we are not adults yet. And if you do expect us to look and act like adults, then we should be treated the same as you or any other adult. If you must implicate such a strict dress code, at least talk it over with the students from the schools to tell them why it must be enforced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, do we have another public speaker?
Yes, the final public speaker is Brehan LaCroix. Go ahead, please.
Hello, it's actually Charlie LaCroix. So we're parents at Northwood Elementary as well. We're having issues with the school lunches. My daughter has been coming home with headaches because she doesn't have enough time to eat. And my son is type one diabetic. So he needs to take insulin prior to every meal. And he needs to have adequate time to finish his meal after he takes that certain amount of insulin. Otherwise, he could fall asleep and die. And sometime recently, the principal asked him to throw his lunch in the trash and get back to class. When he was not done with it. And that is very concerning to me. So we need to get to the bottom of this. And I will be attending the school to monitor these lunches from now on. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michaels, are we finished with public comment?
We are finished. There's no more public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We are moving on to Board of Education and Student Board Representative Reports. Student Board Rep Gomez, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yes, thank you. To begin, NBUSD has partnered with the Napa Opioid Safety Coalition to raise awareness of the usage of fentanyl to Napa County students. As many know, the recent surge of fentanyl usage prevalently among teens tragically hit home here at NBUSD this past year. And so there's going to be a sticker competition being held where students living in Napa County can create a digital design, which expresses the dangers of fentanyl usage. You create your original design, then write a page long explanation detailing that components of it include your name, school, grade, and phone number. Then send it into the email of onlytakes2mg@gmail.com. That's onlytakes2 with actual number two, mg@gmail.com. The sticker will be used as part of the Napa Opioid Safety Coalition's campaign. It will be widely distributed and prominently displayed across the county. And there's also a $100 Visa card prize. So this is a great opportunity for artists or people interested in raising awareness for this cause to participate. Secondly, regarding the college series at the Napa County Library, which I brought up at the last meeting due to unforeseen circumstances, the event where the representative from the College Made Clear organization was going to help with the application process for seniors has been indefinitely canceled. Supposed to run from today through each Thursday until the end of the month. But unfortunately, it's been canceled. We are however hoping that it could be rescheduled sometime in the near future. Finally, there's been a very noticeable surge in students not feeling very well at school. There's a lot of bugs going around and a lot of head colds. So make sure to wash your hands. And if you're a kid feeling sick, it'd be a good idea to do what you can to not spread whatever you may have. And then there's also been some viral TikToks going around about this. So it doesn't seem to just be a Napa County issue, but also a nationwide pattern. So that's all I have today. And that concludes my report.
I appreciate the report from our fellow student board rep because I now have a high school student. So I will definitely pass on that message to him. On August 29th, I attended the Special Education Parent Engagement Session where Director Terry Lynn Resetti and Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings hosted a really wonderful seminar for all of the parents and got a lot of great feedback from the community. I think they took the good and the bad. So I'm really happy that they're going to continue doing this because I think, you know, having the parent voice in how we are rethinking what special ed should be is very important. So really appreciative of that opportunity. On September 1st, I went to the ACHS Back to School Night. It was really happening in place that day. The next day, I went to ACHS football game, which is really exciting as usual. On the sixth, this week, I met with a candidate for the American Canyon City Council, Jesse Corpus. On the seventh, I went to Canyon Oaks Back to School Night. And also fifth grade outdoor education parent meeting. That's always exciting because it's been the last two years, they haven't been able to do that in person. So really happy to see that coming back. And I've been doing a lot of community engagement on one of the items that we will have on our agenda today, K2A on the property swap with American Canyon. And also to inform people about the Measure 2A and directing them to district websites. And that concludes my report.
My report is more of a couple of announcements. My niece was visiting. I hadn't seen her for four years, so we went on a little vacation. And but we went to Crater Lake in Oregon. I was reminded of the devastation of what fires can cause, not that in Napa we need reminders of that, but just seeing it face on again was just one of those things that I participate in volunteer work with community organizations active in disaster and just we're really spreading a lot of the word in regards to preparedness because that is so crucial right now. And neighborhood connection as well. So if you're curious about COAD, that's what it stands for. And you can go on their website and they're doing a lot of great work in regards to outreach and preparedness for fires. And yeah, just participated in those things locally and just reminder of of what we don't want to happen here anytime at all. But it's important to be prepared. So that concludes my report.
Yes, thank you. My report is fairly brief between the Labor Day holiday and my daughter's birthday and a trip to LA for UCLA orientation. I haven't been here very much. But I did have a policy committee meeting on September 1st and have been engaged in community engagement on various issues of public interest. And I did last night attend as a parent, the Napa High Choir Back to Choir Night, which was very fun. I will echo what one of our students of the month said, it's a wonderful and inclusive family there. And I had the pleasure of hearing the a cappella group, which now has one of my kids in it, perform for the first time. And that was really exciting. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is just to share with the community that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And some of you may be aware that this is that safe gun storage and gun violence prevention is an area of passion for me. And so I just want to express my gratitude to the district for our proactive stance on educating our community about the importance of safe gun storage. If you are a gun owner, it's your responsibility to store it safely. And safe storage means locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. And the other thing that I wanted to share was just a reminder that we now have 988 as the emergency mental health crisis hotline available. Because also unsecured weapons are associated with successful completions of suicide. And people don't realize that 51% of all deaths by firearm are suicide. And it is obviously a very lethal method of completing a suicide attempt. And so I just wanted to also share the public health information and the community information with anyone listening that we also in California, many people are unaware that we have a red flag law. Which means that if you or if someone that you know very well, someone lives in your household or someone that you just know in passing, if you believe that they are a danger to themselves or others because they are experiencing mental instability and a mental crisis, there is something that you can do, you can report that to the police and they can legally temporarily take custody of those weapons to keep that person and the community safe. So that I just wanted to reiterate that information. And that concludes my report.
Well, I too did a little bit of traveling. I went back east and saw my son and attended a longtime friend's son's wedding. And but while I was there with the magic of electronic communication, I was able to attend the Board Advisory Meeting, Board Policy Advisory Meeting, and we'll be talking, you know, there'll be a presentation on that later on. And I, just before I left, I had a short visit with the principal and took some of my old English teaching materials over to some teachers. So they get to help them with Shakespeare. And I also completed my mandatory my mandated reporter of child abuse training. And it's something that I'm always a couple of days late doing, but it is extremely important that I do it because the schools are where people see the signs of possible abuse and everybody does need to do this training. We want to keep our children safe. And that's the end of my report.
Yes, so on the 26th of August, I attended the Vintage High School Home Opener at Memorial Stadium. JV prevailed, varsity did not. On the 31st, I attended the Back to School Night at Alta Heights. On the 6th, I attended the first Measure A1 Call Center Night. And then on the 7th, I stopped by to lend support at the Measure A1 Call Center. And then on the 8th, I had a great visit at McPherson Elementary. And I wanted to thank Principal Knox and his staff who delivered a great tour today.
Special Education Committee Advisory Committee.
We have not met. We have not met either.
We have not met.
City of Yountville, we have not met.
Great, thank you, President Jankowitz. Good evening, Napa Valley Unified School District, Board of Education, and broader community. It's been a busy couple of weeks with school visits as we launched the 2223 school year. I've been at American Canyon Middle School, Donaldson Way, Napa Junction, Shear, Browns Valley, Willow, Snow, Redwood Middle School, and Northwood since our last board meeting. I've continued to observe our expanded PE, physical education and music programs at the elementary sites in action. That's been wonderful to observe. And I've enjoyed really seeing some of our new specialists at work. I also have been able to observe our new breakfast in the classroom program at some sites. While also catching pieces of engaging science lessons with teachers that are implementing the new elementary science curriculum. That's been great to observe as well. I loved my Redwood Middle School visit where I saw Mr. Wilmarth teaching his accelerated math course to middle schoolers who were demonstrating a very deep understanding, so early in the year, of using different variables to solve equations. They were being very metacognitive around their mathematical thinking. And so I appreciated observing him at work with our accelerated math students at Redwood. One of my favorite highlights from these school visits was the time I spent at both Shear and Browns Valley, where I got to observe the K8 pilot models in action. We have a seventh grade and two sixth grades at Shear. And the inaugural cohorts of sixth graders at Browns Valley. It was also great to see how teachers at both of those schools are implementing the new K8 program model that provides a smaller school option during the middle school years for parents and students that program features specifically. I also want to recognize that the start of the year can bring some unanticipated challenges as we implement new programs and our enrollment stabilizes for the year post the pandemic. With that being said, we appreciate the hard work of our staff to ensure students across the district settle in. And we also appreciate the patience and understanding of our families as the district aims to continuously improve and refine new programs that are being implemented. I appreciate the parents who spoke tonight and also those who've emailed me. We always appreciate your constructive feedback and input. We hear you. We're researching the impacts of some of our new program models and services. We know that the implementation of the new elementary schedule has elicited some feedback. In fact, I was at Northwood Elementary today observing the lunch myself alongside Director Matt Manning, who oversees elementary programming. Again, we appreciate feedback. Our team works hard to continuously improve. So please know that district staff are at schools supporting our principals and problem solving the challenges and concerns that some parents have shared. We will continue to assess the impacts and determine next steps as we consider any potential adjustments that may be possible, all while balancing other constraints. I thank everyone in advance for their patience and understanding as we work through implementation of new program services and schedules. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant Superintendent. And we will start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jankowitz, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative Gomez. As the news is full of stories about staffing shortages in the schools, I would like to share a few things that NBUSD is currently doing and planning to do to deal with this very real issue. First of all, many districts use the strategy of offering hiring bonuses. NBUSD has a long history of doing this as well. Currently, we offer a $10,000 hiring bonus for key difficult to fill positions like credentialed nurses, speech language pathologists, and special education teachers. We continuously revisit this list and add positions as needed. A few years ago, we began a program with grant funding in collaboration with the Napa County Office of Education to offer tuition reimbursement and other supports for new special education teachers. And we're proud to continue this program. Through this grant, we are also providing tuition reimbursement and stipends to general education teachers who add an additional authorization to their credential and switch to special education. Finding teachers with a bilingual authorization and STEM teachers has also been historically challenging. In response, we began a partnership with Sonoma State University four years ago to have a residency program housed at Pubo Vista Elementary and to have a residency program housed at Pueblo Vista Elementary and Napa High School. Through this program, we host students who are going through their credentialing programs for one whole year. They get to experience a full school year alongside a master teacher while completing their coursework and student teaching requirements, which is incredible preparation for teaching. The residency grant pays for a small living stipend, and they serve as substitute teachers one day a week for us. We have had this great opportunity to build relationships with these, with these aspiring teachers and to be able to preview their skills. This year, we hired six of our residents from last year into permanent hard to fill positions. Because of the success of this program, we are currently preparing a grant to continue this partnership for another five years. In this current staffing shortage, we have been challenged to fill all positions as soon as we would want. But we know that we'd be in much worse position without these strategies in place. We will revisit our signing bonuses and look particularly at some hard to fill classified positions as part of that solution, while also expanding these long-term grow your own approaches that have and will continue to help us not just hire a person, but hire great people. My final announcement is about our substitute pay rates. In order to remain competitive with neighboring districts, especially in the areas surrounding American Canyon, we will be raising our sub rates. We're looking at a daily rate for people with a 30-day sub permit of $250, a daily rate for teachers who are credentialed of 275, and a long-term resident sub or retired NBUSD teacher of $300 per day. We will also be offering a new substitute special. So receive $500 bonus after working 20 days for NBUSD in order to defray some of the costs associated with becoming a substitute teacher. So for anyone interested in becoming a substitute, as a reminder, Napa County Office does all of the sub hiring for NBUSD and all the other districts in our county. So please visit their website to get the process started. Thank you, and this concludes my report. NCOA.
Thank you, Ms. Page, for illuminating all of the hard work that we're doing at the local level to respond to what is a national crisis around the shortage in the educational workforce on both the certificated teacher side and on the classified support side. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson speak, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Jankowitz and NBUSD Board of Education Tripses, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Sam Gomez, and members of the NBUSD community. Thank you for an opportunity to provide you with an update from Operational Services. So we're going to start with food service. Breakfast in the classroom began on the first day of the 2223 school year and is within any new endeavor. There are kinks to work out, but through strong collaboration between the food service and the site administration and staff at each elementary site, areas of concern are being addressed in a timely manner. However, even with some bumps in the road, the success of breakfast in the classroom cannot be overstated. For the first eight days of the 2223 school year, the number of breakfast meals almost doubled as compared to the first eight days of the 2122 school year. In 2122, 13,800 breakfasts were delivered at elementary schools during those first eight days. While during the first eight days in the 2223 school year, 26,008 meals, breakfast meals were consumed by elementary students. Clearly, the numbers show that providing students the healthy breakfast after the bell has rung provides more students an opportunity to participate in the meal program. Again, I want to thank the elementary site and, and food service personnel for working together to make sure students are served delicious and nutritious meals to start their school day. Also, food service will be rolling out next week on September 15th, Harvest of the Month Taste, Taste Testing Events. That's a tongue twister. This will be starting at West Park Elementary School. Students will be encouraged to take a learning bite of tomatoes, which will be featured in Pico de Gallo. We look forward to receiving the feedback from students and staff from West Park that they will provide for our food service staff on these taste testing events. In transportation, while sped ridership has remained fairly consistent from last year, transportation has seen an increase with the general education students being bussed. 2122 numbers were 671 general education students were being bussed, while in 2223, the numbers are at or above 964 students. Most of this increase is attributed to the transportation hub at Harvest Middle School, where students were bussing approximately 250, 50 students each day. We already need a bus driver. I'd like to get my director of transport from not driving a bus right now, Justin Vinyon. So if anybody out there would like to drive a school bus, it's quite rewarding. And you can visit our MBSD website to learn more about that. Maintenance and Operations employees did an outstanding job ensuring our 27 school campuses are ready to start the 2223 school year. In addition to the daily routines at each school site, MNO employees are adapting to the increased demands at most elementary and middle school sites with the expanded learning opportunity programs offerings after school and others after school enrichment activities. Our MNO employees take great pride in their work and are very proud to play a role to ensure students can learn in a warm and right now, cool, safe, clean, dry environment. And lastly, I appreciate Leslie Walters' shout out. And I do want to recognize how the maintenance department rose to the occasion during these unprecedented weather conditions this week. I've lived in Napa since 1975. I don't think we've had two continuous days of 114-degree weather, nor have we had these over almost, you know, over 100 degrees in such consecutive days. It's, it's been pretty unprecedented. So just a great job by that, by the maintenance department, everybody, quite frankly, for working together on this. And then later tonight, you're going to learn about the summer internship program. Now, I've talked about this before in the past, but Jaden Chase was a, is a senior at New Tech, and Hunter McMurray is a senior at Valley Oak. They cannot be here tonight. They did participate in the internship with the Maintenance and Grounds Department. And then finally, with our athletics, the fall sports season at American Canyon High, Napa High, and Vintage High is well underway. Student athletes are competing this fall in boys and girls water polo, girls tennis, girls golf, cross-country football, and balls volleyball. And also by the end of the month, live streaming of athletic events occurring at either Memorial Stadium or Wolfden Stadium should begin, finally, followed closely by live streaming of events occurring in the gyms at the three comprehensive high schools. Thank you, and this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for all that work in Operational Services. Next, we'll have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Jankowitz, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Representative Gomez, and the NBUSD community. We are three weeks into the new school year and focused on creating an ecosystem of preneo for our students, staff, and families. As Trustee Chu mentioned, as part of our effort on Monday, August 39th, the Instructional Division hosted a special education parent listening and learning session for both our TK to 12th grade students as well as our preschool students that reside in NBUSD boundaries. I was incredibly appreciative of the family sharing positive experiences at NBUSD as well as some areas of growth that we have. This is a kickoff to our sped parent advisory group that will be starting in later September with representatives from each of the, of the schools. This is our step in providing opportunities for two-way communication with our sped families. And we think that's really critical and important group that we need to make sure that we're responsive to. As you will hear tonight in our present, in the presentation and supportive board priority number two, the English Language Development Curriculum Benchmark called Hello was recently provided to teachers at elementary school sites to support newcomer students that are new to the United States in the, in foundational English language skills. So far, the reports from teachers have been positive, and we look forward to measuring the impact of this new resource. We are also excited to launch building thinking classrooms in mathematics this week, which is aligned to board priority number one, focused on TK 12 mathematics, supporting students at those key transition points, making sure that the instructional practices are aligned. This year-long community practice includes over 20 secondary and elementary math teachers from 5th and 6th grade and 8th and 9th grade. The team of teachers with the support of academic specialist Kinder Parsons are reading, discussing, learning, practicing, and reflecting as colleagues on the usage of 14 thinking practices that will work to create deeper learning and math for all students. And the Data and Assessment Department partnered with the Instructional Services Team to provide training to principals, assistant principals, and multilingual learner site leads on improving the learning environment and experiences for multilingual learners through the Moss Bloom Framework. The Moss Bloom Framework combines high support and high academic expectations. During the training, Dr. Veronica Aguayo, our district ELD academic specialist, shared how the ecosystem of preneo framework can help staff learn at a deeper level the cultural assets of their multilingual learners and shift the language in our classrooms from deficit-based to asset-based. Dr. Peter Abud created a dashboard in Elevation, our multilingual learner information platform for staff to examine data that allows them to easily see how students, how students, especially our multilingual learners, reading, writing, listening, and speaking scores in LPAC. And from this, staff are able to focus on the quantitative and qualitative, what the quantitative and qualitative data reveal about the cultural and linguistic assets and needs of our multilingual learners. Every secondary site will receive the same training in the month of September with the support of the multilingual learner lead, quite a mouthful, which is Dr. Veronica Aguayo. And lastly, I would like to end with a celebration. I want to extend congratulations to Greg Mesa, the Special Education Workability Coordinator and the Specialized Vocational Services Team for receiving a perfect score from the California Department of Education for our workability programs. Program serves our students who graduate from, or who, who finish high school and then are still being served in special education. Our team was rated at the highest level at integrating, integrated in advance. And so it's much, it's hard to do much better than a perfect score. And so we just want to congratulate the sped team on their work and dedication to serving our students all the way up to age 22. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. And lastly, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees Business Services. He's online.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Tonight's update will focus on enrollment. Like many districts across the state, Napa Valley Unified has declining enrollment. Since 201617, enrollment has declined by approximately 1,800 students. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we have averaged a decline of about 400 students per year. What makes us here so unique is that even though we've had an overall decline of about 400 students, actual elementary enrollment came in 100 students more than projection. While middle school enrollment came in 48 below projections, and high school became, came in 57 below. We've also had a great deal of late enrollment. For example, since the first day of school, we have enrolled a total of 50 elementary students. To summarize, while we had declining enrollment, where the actual declining occurred was very different from what was projected or even historic patterns. We will continue to monitor enrollment and adjust staffing to accommodate. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. That concludes staff reports this evening. President Jankowitz.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to this meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion of item or items is requested by the board. First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Vera, may I please get a roll call vote?
Yes. Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris.
I'm.
Trustee Shu.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Moving on to presentations this evening, under General Services, we have Introduction to California School Boards Association, CSBA, Recommended Policy Updates, June 2022.
And this is the first round of CSBA updates that came to us in July for the 2223 school year, and were reviewed by the Policy Committee. They're being introduced here tonight and were brought forth for action at the subsequent board meeting on September. No. Yes, September 22nd. Correct, September 22nd. So you'll see them for action at that meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on the CSBA Public Policy Updates?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. Instructional Services, Presentation of Napa Valley Ed Foundation and NBUSD Summer Mentor Program. Welcome, Director Ready.
That's Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Rep Gomez, and the Napa community that are in the audience and listening in. Thank you for the opportunity to share tonight the Napa Valley Education Foundation and Napa Valley Unified School District Summer Mentor Program. And thank you to Napa Valley Ed Foundation for this partnership. We're grateful and excited to present to you tonight the Power Partnerships and Student Voice as they share their experiences in the Summer Mentor Program this evening. The Summer Mentor Program is one key practice that is at the high school level. And Mr. Michaels, if you could put the slides up. And if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. It's one key practice associated with NBUSD Strategic Goal Number One, College and Career Readiness. And students who participate in real-world experiences, we know also thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. And I think you'll hear that from our students this evening. Next slide, please. Additionally, this is a part of our local control accountability plan. And so our goal is to increase the number of high school students participating in internships and work-based learning. And so you'll hear tonight how this program has grown. You'll hear from key staff and partners this evening from our community, as well as our students who have built, grown, and sustained this incredible program. The first key staff member from NBUSD is our Work-Based Learning Coordinator, Amber Cleveland, who this program would not be possible without. I'll introduce her and bring her up to the mic.
Good evening. Next slide, please, Jordan. So these are the, the opportunities that we gave the students this summer. So they have the chance to choose from one of these industries to work for, for over the eight weeks. So anyone can apply 16 and over in Napa County. We served 58 students this year, and we partnered with 35 employers. Next, please. Thank you. So now we want to talk a little bit about celebrations, areas of growth, and next steps. So this year's celebration is that we went from two industries to five, which was a lot, but it was great. So the second celebration is that one of those five industries was actually within our own. So we were able to actually hire NBUSD students to work with Mr. Pearson in our Maintenance and Operations Department, which was awesome. And then our third celebration is we partnered with Napa Valley College, and the students had a chance to earn work experience credit while they were working for the eight weeks. So the areas of growth is hiring our own was a little bit more difficult than we knew. So now that we've done it before, I feel like we have a better understanding of it for next year. So the onboarding process. The second part is areas of growth would be the coordination with partners. When anything grows, there's a lot more coordination needed, so continuing to coordinate well. And the third area of growth would be our workshop attendance. Again, we had more kids participate. So the students participate in weekly workshops for the duration of the eight weeks focused on soft skills, such as financial literacy. We partnered with mentors for self-care, how to, how to professionally create a resume, things like that. And then our next steps would be to, now that we, we hired our students internally in one department, we would like to expand that so some of the other NBUSD departments, now that we know the orientation process. And the other next step would be, now that we've grown, we would like to refine our communication with key stakeholders, that being parents, looping in parents at the beginning of the program, as well as the students again, and employers to really explain the program in detail. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to turn it over to some students and employers that have been so patient to be able to talk about their experience. So Jordan, can you please cue the first video? Thank you. Okay, thank you. And now I would like to introduce Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services for NBUSD, Mr. Mike Pearson.
So thank you, Amber. Before I begin, I'd really like to thank Napa Valley Ed Foundation, specifically Jennifer Stewart, for her leadership in making this happen. This has really been, since I took this job, a big passion of mine, being a former site principal. I just saw huge opportunities for students to have internships in the maintenance and grounds and potentially food service. We actually had one in transportation as well, too. We were fortunate this year to have Hunter McMurray and Jaden Chase participate in these, in the internship. These two young gentlemen, who are both, one's a senior at Valley Oak and one's a senior at New Tech, really embraced the opportunity to work with approximately 40 different employees in the maintenance department. They were able to participate in the general maintenance, the plumbing, HVAC, grounds, carpentry, painting, locksmith, dislasure, and pool maintenance areas. And then they did, they did a rotation in all those. And then after they were done with that rotation of all those departments, then we asked them which ones they'd like to concentrate their last two to three weeks on. And so they were given, being able to give us some choice on that, which is really a good thing for them to have happen. Hunter on the left, he's all in. I mean, he wants to come work for me right now. And if I had, if he was old enough, I probably would hire him because we need him. And Jaden on And Jayden on the other side, he wasn't, I'm not sure this is his cup of tea. I think he had a great time doing, he would tell you that he had a great time doing the internship. But and he learned a lot, but he learned that maybe this isn't exactly what the type of industry he wants to be in. We really threw these two young men into just what it was all about. And they had to start their day at 6:00 AM in the morning and you'd be surprised, but they were there. One was bright eyed and bushy tailed. You can probably imagine who that one was. And one was a little blurry eyed. But they were both there, but they were both there. And they did just about everything we asked them to do during their entire internship. So we're really pleased. I'm really pleased to have had this, shared this opportunity, had these two boys have this opportunity. Because it's really what a lot of students need. Not, you know, I mean, they may go off to college and they may not, but now they have some skills and they have an idea and they have like, I have a path. And one of the things I was always passionate about as a high school principal was I wanted kids to know what they can do after they graduate. It's great. We get them to the finish line. It's great. We get them a high school diploma. I was going to say college, a high school diploma. But they need to have a path once they get done. And it's really difficult to make sure every kid has that path or has a direction to go. They may not follow it all, but at least they have a direction to go. So again, I do want to thank Amber, your hard work, your team's hard work for everything you did. And Jennifer Stewart, specifically with Napa Valley Ed Foundation for making this happen as well, too. I think paying these students also, too, was a huge benefit to the program. I do believe many of the students would participate whether they're paid or not, but obviously having a few, well, I don't know if they were Benjamin Franklins. Maybe they were George Washingtons in their back pocket. May help, helped make it go a little bit longer for them. So thank you very much and I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Jordan, can we cue the second video, please? Perfect. Thank you. I would now like to introduce the Director of Human Resources from Silverado Resort and Spa, Tammy Douglas.
Thank you, Amber, and thank you, everyone, for inviting us here tonight. The Resorting to Opportunity Program is super, super passionate to me. I was fortunate enough to meet Amber Cleveland and Stephanie Solberg back in 2016. And in 2017, we got together and we figured, how can we let all of these students know that there's viable careers in hospitality right here in their backyard? You know, Napa Valley is known for food, wine, hospitality, that culture. How do we bring that to life to high school students? And in 2018, we had our inaugural Resorting to Opportunity Program. And there was just two hotels that participated at the time. But it was just exciting to see this come to life with the students. And what the program consists of, for those of you who don't know, is they come to the hotel. You know, for example, at Silverado Resort, the first week is their onboarding. They go through a new hire orientation where they learn everything about the hotel. And then they go through the same service culture training that we put every single one of our team members through so that they really understand what hospitality is all about. And then they do rotations, two weeks in the spa, two weeks in food and beverage, and two weeks in housekeeping. Then they get the last week, they get to kind of choose what they'd like to do. But while they're learning in all those different areas, they're also invited to come to a morning manager stand-up meeting where they're in there with the general manager, director of finance, director of HR, director of sales, talking about what's going on at the hotel throughout the day. They're invited to the monthly safety committee meeting so that they can understand how workplace safety is so important in in any career. They got to play a little tennis. Sam, who's here with me tonight, got to be HR for a day. And we brought cookies to all the team members to celebrate National Chocolate Chip Cookie Day and just getting to see what hospitality is all about. And it's really, it's really rewarding when you get to see these students who come into the program. And maybe, you know, they're really nervous about talking in front of a group of people. And then you see them at the graduation and they're standing up, they're giving a speech in front of a room. Or how excited they are when they get their first paycheck and go, oh, my gosh, Tammy, I have to open a bank account now. You know, and it's, it's just, it's great to get to see these kids really blossom and really develop and really see what their potential is and just grow with that confidence. And some of the students that we've had through the Resorting to Opportunity Program over the years have been some of the most talented individuals that I've ever gotten to work with. And we've been quite fortunate that usually every year, there's individuals who start the program and say, you know what? Hospitality is for me. Can I stay and work part-time while I'm, you know, in school for my junior, my senior year? And we say, yes. So it's absolutely wonderful. I'm excited to see how many employers are getting involved in this great program. It is a paid mentorship program. They work three days a week. They're about four-hour shifts, sometimes a little more. Sometimes the students will say, hey, I want to make a little extra money, you know? But it's just a great program. I'm so thankful to Napa Unified School District and Napa Valley or Napa Valley Education Foundation. And of course, my partnership with Amber and Monica, it's just a great program. And I am honored to invite one of the most amazing young ladies I have ever had the opportunity to work with, Ms. Samantha Cruz.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Samantha Cruz. I'm a senior at American Canyon High School. And I had the privilege of serving out my NVUSD Mentor Program at Silverado Resort and Spa with, here with Tammy Douglas. And some main things that I would really like to share with you all is how amazing it was. I got to rotate, as she said, a bunch of different departments and even HR. And I don't think I would have had this opportunity at a regular job. I think it's also great that I got to participate in these workshops where we got to talk about financial aid and resumes. We even got to make vision boards, which I don't think we would ever even do, things like that at school. I got to enroll in a college class or learn about, a little bit about work experience, earn some college credit. It was amazing. I got to meet amazing adults and other college students that were also working at Silverado. I just think that we should really advertise this program more because getting paid during the summer, it's really manageable. And for me, this was my first work experience. And I think it's really good for high school students because you're not just thrown in a job. You have a mentor and you have great people that are supporting you. And I gained so many amazing skills and I am able to be comfortable and stand up in front of a bunch of adults and talk about my experience. I'm just very grateful to have a school district that offers these things. And I really hope that it continues to grow so that other people's can continue to experience and grow the way that I was able to do. Thank you very much for your time.
You are a wonderful ambassador.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And the last video, please, Jordan. Thank you. And I would now like to introduce Jill Durk, the Program Manager for the Napa Valley Farmworker Foundation.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you all for having me here tonight. Fields of Opportunity is a core program under mentorship for fields of, for the Napa Valley Farmworker Foundation. Anybody is eligible to apply, but we're looking for somebody who is interested in learning about a career in viticulture or analogy and somebody who's just willing to learn. But the success of this program has been based with our partnerships with the Napa Valley Education Foundation, the Napa Valley Unified School District, and the Napa Valley Grape Gores. It also is key with 23 employers that participated this year. So their names that you would recognize are Frog Sleep, Trefethan, Roth, leaders in the industry. And each of them create a unique opportunity for the students. They are in the mechanics departments, they're in the winemaking department, they could be in the vineyard, they could be in the tasting room. They could be a combination of those different departments. But what makes this program, this particular Fields of Opportunity program unique, I think, is that students really, they work and they gain, gain a competency in this area. And they have somebody focusing on them for eight weeks. And it's different than just a regular job. So they have this attention, they have this focus, they have a connection with their mentor. And then every Friday for eight weeks, they participate in these soft skills workshops. So they network with other students. And I like to consider this their first professional network. We are carrying through with an alumni program to keep them connected and to help them with jobs, letters of recommendation, whatever they might need to progress in this industry. So on August 12th, we graduated 30 fantastic students from this program. They're all shining bright, golden. And I have the privilege of introducing Oscar Rodriguez to you, the C D.
Hi, I'm Oscar Rodriguez. I was part of the Fields of Opportunity Program. And I like to say I'm thankful for telling about my experience during the program. Now, the, the, sorry, before and after the program, there was a huge difference from where I am. You see, before the program, I was very fixed-minded and I didn't like to step out of my comfort zone a whole lot. And during this time in the program, I have learned to have a mentality of just going at it, just keep going at it. And that allowed me to grow as a person. And I worked for Mario Bazan, which works for various wine industries and wine companies. And every time I was placed into a new wine industry, there would be a new challenge and a new fear of being in a place of uncertainty. But I still kept that mentality of going at it, to see what I can do, to see my growth, to just explore a little bit more. And with that being said, I hope that every single person who takes the Fields of Opportunity Program can experience the same amount of growth that I have felt, who can go at it, who can explore, look at their career, you know, see if the wine industry is right for them. And after the program and after reflecting upon everything that I've done, I feel very accomplished and I feel very proud of myself. And I just hope for the future generation and for whoever is to come can feel the same amount of accomplishment that I have felt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. I want to thank the Napa Valley Education Foundation for their continuous partnership in this. I've been partnering with them the whole time and it would be not possible without Jennifer. I also want to thank Monica for supporting me with all of these ideas going from two to five. One year was a lot, but I think it was great. So thank you, Monica. And then I also want to thank all the students, all the parents and all the employers for their partnership and especially the ones that are here tonight. Thank you guys very much for being here. And that's all I have.
Truly, thank you to the partners that have. Thank you to the partners that have been willing to participate. What an amazing program. Thank you to the students who braved the podium. We are very proud of you. Thank you, Jennifer Stewart. You want to take a, want to stand up for one second? So there you go. Thank you. Would it be possible, Amber, to get a list of the companies that have participated thus far? And are you looking to expand the companies as you expand the students? Okay, yeah, I'd love to see that list.
I have a question. So we heard a lot of great stories tonight that were really impressive. And, you know, I thought that was fantastic. And so my real question then is, what would it take to significantly expand the number of students served by this program?
You heard this evening was, as we grew from two to five, really seeing how can we handle that? And do we have the support to be able to have a warm handoff to our employers with our students and also have it supported through the college? So I would say those are two areas. I don't know, Amber, if you want to add anything.
Director Ready, do you have a target of expansion for the upcoming year?
Our goal this year was 100 and we came in at 58. So growing that and hopefully hitting 100 students next year and doubling, almost doubling the size would be one of our goals.
Certainly, the students that participated, if there was an opportunity for them to speak to their peers, they're certainly very articulate, very well spoken and would be wonders, wonderful stewards of the program.
That's a, that's a great idea to engage our students.
I also just want to add, I mean, this has been an impressive program for, during the summer. But there is, we are looking at exploring the possibility of some school year, not so much mentorship programs like it is in the summer, but internship or work-based learning in the school year. So it may not be at the scale that you see in the summer where they're working, you know, eight-hour days for the number of weeks that they work, but something a little maybe more like many.
Condensed, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. Two of the areas that we are growing it within the school year is to our multilingual learner population through our English Language Development classes, through the use of Naviance. When you speak about how do we grow it, it first starts with the career planning that happens through our Naviance program. And so providing some targeted support to our students there. And then Amber is growing our program with the partnership with Director Knox to our avid program to our students in their junior year. So to have a, I would say, a selection of various options of work-based learning that they could engage in. And so through those two areas, we'll see how those work. Additionally, we're looking at our career technology.
I was going to say, could CTEs.
Yeah, career technical education, it actually is one of the 11 core components. And so doing an analysis of our CTE programs to see how we can really hit that capstone and make sure that our students in that third year are engaged in an internship. So we have some exploration to do around there in our partnership with Napa County Office of Education.
Congratulations. What a great program. Incredibly impressed. Well done.
Well done. I don't want to put asks out right now at the board meeting, but based on Assistant Superintendent Page's report, we would really love to see some kind of, it'd be great if we could consider education and teacher opportunities as well and continue to just develop programs that grow our own. In addition to what Assistant Superintendent Page mentioned to her, her report. I mean, we really are in a teacher, massive teacher shortage and we need to address that over the next few years. So, great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the presentation of the NVUSD Master Plan for Multilingual Learners, again, under the Instructional Services Division.
Mr. Michaels, can you pull up the presentation, please? Thank you very much. Just give us a minute. Might need just a few minutes. Okay, well, good evening again, President Digwood, board trustees in the NVUSD community. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce our multilingual learner master plan. As you will hear from our team, this plan has been in the works for several years and is a testament to the importance of ensuring the development of a comprehensive plan grounded in a clear understanding of our current instructional practices and student needs. Next slide, please. We have an esteemed group of presenters tonight who will share with you how the plan was developed and as well as the key components. Tonight, you will hear from Directors of Curriculum and Instruction and English Learner Services, Matt Manning and Monica Ready. You'll also hear from Janine Burt, our Magnet Project Coordinator, as well as our District Academic Specialist, Kelly Miller, Tracy Wies, and Dr. Veronica Guayo. Next slide, please. And now I will pass to Director Manning, who will take it from here.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Henry Jennings. Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to share with you the NVUSD Master Plan for English Learners this evening. The presentation will follow the design of the master plan encompassing some of the key elements of the plan. We will begin with an overview of the development of the plan and the elements that come together to form the final document. This includes the strategic drivers that guide how we address the needs of multilingual learners and our plan. and our plan for successfully leading implementation of the plan. Next slide, please. We want to start with a brief back in time to review the milestones associated with the development of the plan. This work began in the spring of 2021 as we partnered with WestEd to conduct a comprehensive review of the programs and services provided to multilingual learners in NVUSD. We launched an expanded leadership team comprised of teachers, site administrators and district administrators and dove deep into researching and learning more about areas of strength and growth areas in our service delivery model. Our WestEd partners met with DLP parents to gather feedback that was later incorporated into the plan. We conducted classroom observations and English learner shadowing to gather input on the school experience from the student perspective. The expanded leadership team worked together to create a vision for multilingual learners in NVUSD. Finally, WestEd presented findings to the Board of Education in two thousand twenty, in May, excuse me, June of two thousand twenty-one. This past year was spent working with the expanded leadership team and in partnership with WestEd to review recommendations and develop the plan that we are presenting this evening. Next slide, please. Four key findings of the program review served to inform the development of the instructional elements of the master plan. The teachers and administrators conducting classroom observations and English learner shadowing noted that there were not sufficient quality interactions occurring between students, meaning that when students were not engaging in significant academic discourse with one another. While these observations were conducted during hybrid learning, the consensus that there was a need was that there was a need across the board to get students talking more in a meaningful way. Additional scaffolds were provided, were needed to support students in meeting grade level standards and increased usage of integrated English language development strategies across all academic content areas was noted as a need. And while there have been pockets of strong professional learning across the district, a more systemic and unified approach to providing professional learning was recommended. I will now pass to Director Ready, who will begin with an overview of the master plan.
Thank you, Director Manning. Next slide, please. So central to the plan is the NVUSD vision for multilingual learners. This collaboratively developed vision informs the three main components of the plan. Those being the theory of action, the strategic drivers and the leadership structure. The theory of action defines the key objectives of the plan and the strategies we will employ to meet those objectives. It is what NVUSD commits to in order to improve multilingual learner teaching and learning. The strategic drivers in the middle of this diagram of the plan identify key components that must be in place throughout the district and addresses the core responsibilities of district educators and leaders for implementing the plan, such things as improving qualities of instruction, language development, academic achievement and graduation rates for multilingual learners. It is how the district will prioritize and carry out the improvements. And the NVUSD Master Plan for multilingual learners is designed to ensure that our planned strategic objectives and high leverage strategies are implemented. And that is done with the oversight of a leadership structure called the multilingual learner leadership team. To accomplish this, they will establish a team, set criteria of annual benchmarks to measure progress and set communication strategies to share progress with our system and learn more as we implement the plan. Next slide, please. The vision for multilingual learners was collaboratively constructed by the expanded leadership team throughout the early fall of two thousand twenty-one based off of the report developed through WestEd. So our vision is that multilingual learners in Napa Valley Unified School District experience deep, rigorous and culturally responsive instruction that leads to high levels of academic achievement and English language proficiency. Their multilingual and multicultural assets are valued and contribute to their sense of belonging in the school community. Multilingual learners graduate college and career ready with the communication skills needed for success in a global society and with opportunities and choices for a successful future. Next slide, please. Embedded within this plan are three core beliefs. One, that all educators are responsible for language development. Two, that multilingual learners can achieve at high levels with the right support. And just as important that their culture and language are assets in our community and in our schools. Next slide, please. An education theory of action is a set of causal statements. They describe the actions and strategies that improve instructional practices and student performance over time and at a scale. The theory of action within the multilingual learner master plan is composed of five high leverage strategies and strategic objectives that the team with the support of WestEd identified throughout the fall of two thousand twenty-one. The theory of action carries out the five strategic objectives through high leverage strategies to meet these goals that help to realize our vision for multilingual learners. The five objectives are improving the quality of instruction for multilingual learners, building the capacity of all educators and leaders, ensuring equity and access for multilingual learners, increasing effectiveness of programs and services and engaging families and community. In the plan, these objectives are written in the form of if them, if then statements. These actions are what the district will do to improve teaching and learning for multilingual learners. For example, if we improve the quality of instruction for multilingual learners by increasing the frequency of quality of interactions, then these students will experience rigorous and meaningful instruction, leading to higher levels of academic achievement. Next slide, please. The strategic drivers are the key components that must be in place in order to improve quality instruction, language development, academic achievement and graduation, graduation rates for multilingual learners. In the next part of the presentation, you will learn about each of these drivers in more detail. And with that, I will turn it over to Tracy, who will describe the instructional models for our multilingual learners.
Thank you. The instructional program models are the structures, structures within which we provide services and support to our multilingual learners. The consistent implementation of these instructional program models ensures that all multilingual learners have access to the same learning opportunities across the district. We, next slide, please. We have two core instructional program models for our multilingual learners. These models are for all multilingual learners every day. The first model is Integrated ELD. So Integrated ELD happens in all content areas all day for all students. In Integrated ELD, teachers provide meaningful access to grade level academic content for our multilingual learners. The teacher is primarily focused on the content standards of whatever subject they're teaching while using the ELD standards in tandem. The next model is Designated ELD. The central goal of Designated ELD is to develop students' English proficiency. Designated ELD is a protected time outside of core content that is designated just for multilingual learners. The instruction within Designated ELD is anchored in the ELD standards and built into and from the core content. I'll pass it on to Kelly Miller, who will be discussing the next strategic driver, the language development approach.
Thank you, Tracy. The second of our three strategic drivers is on the next slide. It's a language development approach. A language development approach describes evidence-based practices for providing multilingual learners with challenging, personalized, high-quality, rigorous, grade-level, standards-based instruction that engages, empowers and inspires learning every day. I can explain what that means on the next slide. First, it means that we sustain academic rigor. We develop deep disciplinary knowledge and central ideas of a discipline in all students interconnectedness and the interconnectedness and interrelationships of the content areas. Second, we hold high expectations. We engage in high-challenge and high-support tasks that provide multiple entry points. Third, we engage English learners in quality interactions. We engage in interactions that are both sustained and deep and that build knowledge and relevant aspects of the discipline. We engage in dialogue that is not scripted and builds on the participants' ideas to promote deep understanding of concepts. Fourth, we sustain a language focus. That means that we develop disciplinary language, discussing how language works and highlighting the characteristics of different genres and the subject-specific discourse. And the fifth is something that really encompasses all four other pieces. And that is that we develop a quality curriculum. We move from ambiguity to increasing clarity, building autonomy through engaging and spiraling development of new concepts, new language and new skills. Next, I'd like to hear from Janine.
So our third strategic driver is to develop or amplify the core educator competencies, which are dispositions and skills all educators need to provide rigorous grade level standards-based instruction and to be effective leaders and teachers of multilingual learners. Next slide, please. In addition to rigorous instruction, our work this year with Dr. Rios and the ecosystem of Carino is a critical component to developing these essential competencies. The Mas Bloom framework combines the culturally responsive practices of having high expectations in an asset-based environment that is socially and emotionally safe and supportive for students. The effective teacher is a warm demander or practices the strategy of care and push. In other words, effective teachers can challenge students to perform at high levels because the students know it's coming from a place of care and partnership between student and teacher. I'll now pass back to Director Manning.
Thank you. Next slide, please. The multilingual learner master plan has an accompanying five-year implementation plan that was co-constructed by the team and will serve as a living document during implementation. This evening, we will highlight the areas of focus for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Next slide, please. There are key action steps this school year equally balanced between curriculum, systems and structures and instructional practices. The first area of focus, quality interaction, professional learning and monitoring, is a key instructional focus for the team this year embedded in the board priorities. We will address the structure of the designated ELD model at both the elementary and secondary levels. Over this first year, elementary will implement designated ELD model options developed last year. Secondary has recommended models that a team will review and decide upon in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. Based on these decisions, we will embed these updates into the master schedules in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The plan calls our attention in year one to focus support on key sub-populations, specifically long-term English learners and newcomers. The second three action steps are key to building the capacity of the organization on the multilingual learner master plan. Implement, these are, implement, implement the MLL leadership team, disseminate the MLL plan to stakeholders, develop a five-year, a five-year professional learning plan. Next slide. We appreciate the focus that the annual board priorities provide and the success criteria associated with this year's priorities were developed with the program review recommendations and the MLL master plan in mind. Next slide. Annual Board Priority Two, focused on high-quality tier-one instruction for all students, include success criteria that come directly from the recommendations and proposed MLL master plan. We are working as a leadership team to develop an observation protocol and self-assessment tool used to support an increase in high-quality student interactions in the classroom. The methods for providing designated ELD have been much more clearly defined, providing sites with a needed tool for planning and implementing designated ELD. Professional development relates to high-quality interactions has already launched and is being led by Janine Burt. This will focus, this will also be a focus of our Professional Learning Day in October as we develop coherence and alignment across all sites at all levels. Janine will share more information now about high-quality interactions and why this is such a critical focus area for us this year. Next slide.
Thanks, Matt. So based on the findings of our research study and from our observations in classrooms around the district, we recognize the need to focus on high-quality interaction for our multilingual learners. The main characteristics of these interactions that we're looking for are that they have depth, that they give students something significant and meaningful to talk about that will motivate them to use their language to convey their ideas. They should also be sustained, where students ask for clarification, provide evidence and listen to the thinking of others and build on their ideas. And third, they should be student-driven, where students develop skills in asking questions and facilitating conversations. In other words, we want students to do teacher-like things. We have created a professional learning plan to help students become, help teachers become skilled in creating the conditions for dialogue in the classroom and to explicitly teach conversation skills. We've developed a workshop that teachers will attend and a tool for them to assess their current practice and set goals for increasing quality interaction. The tool will also be used as a way for school leaders and teams to collect data on our progress. The strategies and protocols for quality interactions can be used across content areas and will work in conjunction with designated ELD to give students multiple opportunities each day to use language in meaningful ways. And now we'll hear from Tracy again.
Thank you. Next slide. We're really excited about the addition of new curriculum to support our newcomers. The first program is called Benchmark Hello and this program provides students with instruction around the need-to-know language basics and fundamental English. This program combines these language skills along with social emotional learning to help students gain experience, proficiency and competence. And after students have developed the essential language basics with Benchmark Hello, the next potential step is another new program called Benchmark Rigor. This program provides foundational literacy support for older newcomers and other English learners. This program will be used at both elementary and secondary. Another step we'll be taking this year too is to improve upon our newcomer intake protocol to ensure a smooth, consistent and welcoming process for all the students that are new to our school system and our country. I'll now pass on to Veronica.
Thank you, Tracy. In addition to increasing our programs for our newcomers, we also saw the critical need to increase our programs and services for our long-term English learners, also known as our LTALs. And part of that plan is to form a district-wide, long-term English learner team. This would be a team that would focus solely on the implementation practices for both students and teachers for our long-term English learners. We would also look toward developing, I'm not, I'm sorry, not developing, but also look toward developed, integrated and designated ELD instructional programs for our long-term English learners. So this would be at both the middle school and at the high school level. We also would establish services and supports to assist our LTALs. For example, before, after-school tutoring, writing workshops, Saturday School, parent information sessions, any kind of communication channel that will really help stabilize these communicative services. And then finally, what we've already begun is to implement early intervention at the elementary level, particularly focusing in third through fifth grade in order to reduce our long-term English learner designations. And now I will pass it over to Monica.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Dr. Guayo. So throughout the development of the plan, we had key stakeholders who served in various roles supporting the development, some of which you're hearing from tonight. This model will shift when we engage with partners through the development of a multilingual learner leadership team, which was designed to ensure that our planned strategic objectives and high-leverage strategies that you've heard about are implemented, that our practices are continually being monitored and that our stakeholders are learning so that we increase our effectiveness within this system for and with our multilingual learners. Next slide, please. Through the development of the multilingual learner leadership team, we hope to focus on addressing the key areas that you've heard throughout this evening, tonight and in the plan and meet our goal within the local accountability, local control accountability plan of sixty-five percent of our English language learners and their progress improving in each year, one ELPI level, as well as redesignating or also known as reclassifying fifteen percent of our English language learners annually. One thing I'd like to note in this data is that oftentimes when we are presenting the data from the state, we are referred to our English learners in those terms because of, those are the state terms. However, we are moving as a district to more asset-based frame around the language focused on multilingual learners. And so we look to achieve these goals as we work together, TK-12, with our teachers, our staff and our parents and our, the support of our services from our parent and communities on to implement these plans so that we can meet these goals. Next slide, please. And we start and end this presentation of the multilingual learner plan with a vision, one in writing and end it with our college and career readiness, as you see these smiling graduates. So college and career readiness for our multilingual learners is the end goal. We look forward to increasing the number of NVUSD graduates who are bilingual and hopefully achieving that seal of bilinguism from the state of California. We appreciate your time, attention and patience. This is, we have presented the development of this plan over the past eighteen months and we look forward to future opportunities to share with the Board of Education our growth towards these success indicators and hear your feedback. Next slide, please. And with that, we will take feedback and questions.
Sure, I have a comment and a couple of questions. So first, I'd like to say that I like the first two principles of the plan, which are sustain academic rigor and hold high expectations. We've heard repeatedly that our parents are looking for these from our instruction team. So well done on incorporating this parent feedback into the plan. I am concerned that Benchmark Hello is doubling down on the Benchmark Program, which is responsible for the elimination of books in our elementary school. I'm concerned that this may not be a good idea. Can you explain why Benchmark Hello will help our students?
I can speak to that. Sure. So so what we've been lacking in NVSD is a program that specifically targets meeting the the very specific needs of students who are just newly learning to speak English. So what Hello does is it breaks English down into into the very basic speak, listening, speaking, reading, writing components, and begins and helps to support students in beginning from the very beginning. So we just haven't had a really solid tool to help us achieve that. As Tracy mentioned, once students matriculate out of using the Hello program, they can move into rigor and and then into our core reading programs, which they would potentially use alongside of Hello. But we just, it's really about building those foundational language skills for students who are brand-new to the country. Brand-new to English, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Manny. And I would also like to inquire about the length of the implementation plan. Five years seems like an extremely long amount of time. I would like to know more about why staff thinks this is an appropriate timeline for implementation of this plan.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. I can speak to that. For any like true shift and and strong implementation of a new program, you need at least three to five years. And this program, this implementation plan, because it was developed over a two-year period, it's it's pretty robust and rigorous in terms of the level of the number of items that need to be implemented, and it will take three to five years. And the best part is that it is a living plan. It's not something that we've done and completed, and then we can put on a shelf and say, good job, and move on. It's something that we will continually come back to as part of the leadership structure that Director Man, Director Ready referenced. There is a leadership team that will be constantly monitoring our progress. And then we also have our key stakeholders, which are our D-LAC, who will also be involved in monitoring our progress and meeting those benchmarks that are outlined in the multilingual learner plan. So it will take three to five years to have that really strong implementation.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you to the instructional team.
We can I just, I I don't want to take up too much time, but I do really want to thank everybody who made contributions. Thank you to all the presenters tonight. We have a tremendous amount of professional expertise around the education of our multilingual learners. I want to challenge the board to start using that new terminology and really thinking about our students who have multiple languages languages and and taking that asset-based framing that is being promoted by the Instructional Services Division. But it really is a very comprehensive plan. And given the proportion of English learners and even reclassified students that we have here in Napa Valley Unified School District, it's been a long time coming to have a plan of this caliber, this quality. Our students deserve it, and I am very, very grateful. This was an area of growth that I illuminated upon my arrival as superintendent here over four years ago, and they really, really have delivered in terms of a comprehensive plan that, if implemented with integrity and proficiency, should really move the needle in language development and academic gains for our multilingual learners and increasing our reclassification rate. So we look forward to the work ahead. I think it's a bright future and a much a much a much-needed improvement in this program.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a short break request, so we will see you back here in 37 seconds.
President Jankowicz, there is additional comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
And I want to say something shortly to the after you go.
Yeah, I just was going to say, I got my teaching credential 27 years ago, and we have come such a long way and long overdue. And I just want to commend the team for this thoughtful, strategic, practically-minded plan. It's not, just as you said, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, it's not something that's just going to be like, check, we did this, great job, put the binder on the shelf. This is so well thought out. We are putting our money and our resources where our mouth is. I just want to particularly shout out the importance of supporting the teacher capacity, and I'm very proud of us for acknowledging that because there's a lot of finger pointing at teachers. And I can say that 27 years ago, there was not preparation for teachers to teach English learners. And then the other comment was just, I'm just so thrilled to see the shift to really an asset-based approach and the embracing of rigor. You know, I don't know why it took this long for for the concept that language proficiency proficiency is separate from ability to engage deeply in cognitive tasks. And so just the way we have shined a light on that and problem-solved it and offered just an implementation plan that is going to address, I mean, there's not, I, you know, there's nothing in here, there's nothing missing from here that I can see, and I taught English learners for 15 years. So thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you, Trustee Riser. I I know everyone appreciates your comments.
I'll be short. I think from the core of this presentation, there's what I'm most proud of is just the change of the mindset of seeing our, I love this, multilingual learners from that asset base versus a deficiency that they may carry. And and I just this second slide of all the bullet points of all the the NVUSD team that we have that put this together is just, I mean, what more can I add, right? This is the team that does this day in and day out, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm proud of the board as well to have visioned this, and it takes time to get us to where we are today with a lot of hard decisions. And this is why we've made those hard decisions. So the last thing I will add is that I I trust that the the implementation will be put with a lot of heart and integrity and cariño and that may the board continue to work and and do the part of protecting these valuable programs that will make a lifelong difference in the in the life of so many of our students and 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 embrace the amazing also asset that we have with our with our staff and our team. So just we get all nervous, a beautiful presentation, never see, yeah, it's just a beautiful slide and presentation. So, which is gracias. Well done.
It is a good presentation, and it's, I think it's going to be a very, very good program. Speaking as someone who 20-odd years ago was faced with a class of was called English One, and there were absolutely no materials, and I had to construct them myself, and it was I'd taken a string of courses at Berkeley, so that was helpful, but it was, it was, it was very tough. And I did it for a few years, and and the students did learn English, but this is going to make it easier because all this was, it was always relegated to the English department. And really, kids take other subjects besides English. And what I like about this is we recognized a deficiency. We owned it. We said we're going to do something about it, and then we made all you all do something about it. So, you know, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Okay, thank you. We will see you back here in just a couple moments. Thank you very much for your patience. We're moving on to action items and general services. Resolution 2305 authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361 and Government Code Section 54953.
So move.
First by trustee water, second by trustee Gracia. Mr. Michaels, do we have any in-person public comment? I mean, do we have any public comment? Pardon me.
There is no public comment on this item.
Vera, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez-Marins.
Hi.
Trustee Shu.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Resolution number 2308 ratifying revised boundary maps of the Napa Valley Unified School District School Facilities Improvement Districts, Number One, Napa Area, and Number Two, American Canyon.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on the side of it.
Thank you. Vera, may I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez-Marins.
Hi.
Trustee Shu.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Resolution number 2307 approving and authorizing superintendent to execute property exchange and acquisition agreement with the City of American Canyon. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Vera, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez-Marins.
Hi.
Trustee Shu.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Human Resources, request to hire educator less than fully credentialed.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Riser. Public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Sun Belt Staffing Agreement.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on the site.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. SEOE Leadership Institute, MOU.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia. Second. Second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Request to apply for a waiver of the basic skills requirement for a 30-day substitute permit.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to Instructional Services. Lexia Learning Systems.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Adoption of NVUSD Master Plan for multilingual learners.
So move.
First, first by trustee Water, second by trustee Gracia. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Adoption of school plans for student achievement, the SPSA's for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Operational Services, memorandum between City of Napa and Napa Valley Unified School District for police officer officer support at home football games.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to informational, general services. We have notes to notes attached to curriculum and student support committee, and we have notes attached to the policy committee. Please reference if you so choose. Moving on to business services, trustee Gracia, do you have a comment on the enrollment report?
It is continuing to decline, which is unfortunate, but expected according to our enrollment projections. So.
Thank you very much. Additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent? Future agenda items?
Yes, I would like to hear about how we can begin to utilize the voting system that we have inside the board.
Okay. Are we okay with that not being a future agenda item, but rather just something I kind of administratively look into?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much. And lastly, adjournment, may I get a motion?
So moved.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Hi.
We are now adjourned. Thank you very much. We will see you next week.